You'll be very active.
First and second in every poll in favor?
I'll sit in this one.
What is she reporting me for?
What's that?
I don't know. She said, "Oh."
I have to go to the address here, but I was in a meeting with my boss. I had set my phone down. And we were talking, and I was sitting there, "What are you doing?" He was like, "Who's recording that conversation?" I was like, "Oh, your lawyer." No, no. My attention. Uh, okay. And, uh, you need a motion to go on to executive session?
Second.
So now I'm a six-year-old.
Four people.
Yeah, come on. Carrie?
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie. So I might have to speak up too. Uh, 4.1 approval of the mitts, um, we got 16. The motion.
Motion.
Second. Second. Jessica?
Aye.
Joe? Nora?
Yes.
John?
Aye. I want to speak first.
I know. A lot of pressure.
All right, personnel items for action. Need a motion to approve?
Uh, so, and then questions.
Yeah, then we have discussion.
Second.
Sure. I realized it wasn't. I turned it out.
I still moved it. Is there a second?
What would that say? Second. Can I second? So sure? Yeah. I second. I want to be a part of it. So discussion, uh, personnel items.
Uh, I just had a question on, let's see. Under teacher, new teacher appointments, um, vice is who they're replacing, right? Okay. So is there, hold on, I even printed this out. I never print out, and now I can't print. Um, under, let's see, oh, there's a long, there's a new long-term sub and a new, uh, technology teacher. And they both have, well, one says Kate Carpel and one just says Carpel.
Hmm.
Are they two separate Carpels or are they the same person and we have two different teachers?
Uh, that's true.
That looks weird.
Yeah.
Those ones being replaced by technology teacher and one by the long-term stuff.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, we'll have to correct that.
Yeah. I think that was there. So what should it say?
The, which one?
Well, either one. Um, so there's a long-term sub, um, or what did she, it's like art.
Or, uh, not lean.
Visual art, so art and the vice is just, that one is just Carpel.
Oh, I think that she was finishing the, the year, correct?
I don't know. Is that where you put it?
Yeah, because she's retroactive. She was finishing for Carpel for the remainder of the school year, but then, um, they're transitioning, they're transitioning in the, in the art department at the high school.
Oh, okay. All right, I see, I see.
So they need higher.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I missed that retroactive, uh, piece of that.
Does anybody see the issue with the tenure appointments? Yeah. I hate being a voting member as long as I can sit down. I probably should. Just handle them. We don't have enough to approve. I think it's not impact one way or another.
No.
Influence to it. You're just presenting it.
I'm just presenting it to you as, and you're making it publicly known, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll head on that piece.
If we have five, then yeah, probably.
Okay.
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I want to speak first.
I know. A lot of pressure.
All right, personnel items for action. Need a motion to approve?
Uh, so, and then questions.
Yeah, then we have discussion.
Second.
He's ready with that screen.
Sure. I realized it wasn't. I turned it out.
I still moved it. Is there a second?
What would that say? Second. Can I second? So sure? Yeah. I second. I want to be a part of it. So discussion, uh, personnel items.
Uh, I just had a question on, let's see. Under teacher, new teacher appointments, um, vice is who they're replacing, right? Okay. So is there, hold on, I even printed this out. I never print out, and now I can't print. Um, under, let's see, oh, there's a long, there's a new long-term sub and a new, uh, technology teacher. And they both have, well, one says Kate Carpel and one just says Carpel.
Hmm.
Are they two separate Carpels or are they the same person and we have two different teachers?
Uh, that's true.
That looks weird.
Yeah.
Those ones being replaced by technology teacher and one by the long-term stuff.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we'll have to correct that.
Yeah. I think that was there.
So what should it say?
The, which one?
Well, either one. Um, so there's a long-term sub, um, or what did she, it's like art.
Or, uh, not lean.
Visual art, so art and the vice is just, that one is just Carpel.
Oh, I think that she was finishing the, the year, correct?
I don't know. Is that where you put it?
Yeah, because she's retroactive. She was finishing for Carpel for the remainder of the school year, but then, um, they're transitioning, they're transitioning in the, in the art department at the high school.
Oh, okay. All right, I see, I see.
So they need higher.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I missed that retroactive, uh, piece of that.
Does anybody see the issue with the tenure appointments? Yeah. I hate being a voting member as long as I can sit down. I probably should. Just handle them. We don't have enough to approve. I think it's not impact one way or another.
No.
Influence to it.
You're just presenting it. I'm just presenting it to you as, and you're making it publicly known, so.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll head on that piece.
If we have five, then yeah, probably.
Okay.
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Yeah, what I really liked is the outline dollar background and it was good.
Good. Okay. Finance items for action. Six, uh, need a motion?
So.
Second?
I'll second.
And discussion?
You know, I thought that if I had this, we'd have nothing to get it out. Do we know out of this study what we're actually, specifically what the outcome is with the, is it like a feasibility study, uh, facilities? How can we handle it?
I believe it's a feasibility study just specifically for, um, the power that it would be needed at the bus route if we were to transition to E.
Gosh.
Buses.
Yeah.
So it was in collaboration, I believe, with NISIC.
And what would it do with?
So they'll, they're, they're really, they're looking at the, the footprint of our current structure.
Right.
Power structures and trying to understand what it take. Could we off of our existing power?
Yeah.
Be able to, to handle? How many buses could we handle? You know, how much wattage would we need? Um, so that's, that's all included into that, that study.
They did a root study, didn't they?
Yeah, they did a, they did a bigger study. Not that we don't have power issues already because we seem to, it seems like we lose power like once a week, if not every couple of weeks. Um, so I think the, and then the, the other piece too is where the, the, the maintenance CTE building is that's, there's an additional power source there. So I think our understanding that is if they were to come with power, they would come that way versus, uh, the, towards the roadside. So there would be more significant power from, from that side of that. But yeah, we'll ha, I'll have them present that just so everybody can have an idea of what, what that entails. I'm sure that it's going to, uh, ultimately say that we don't have enough capacity for the infrastructure, um, to be able to handle that. And I think that, that is increasingly becoming a, a hotter topic at the, in Albany in terms of the amount of money that it's really going to cost for, for districts to try to be able to do this.
Yeah, just how piece of work it's.
Yeah. It's, it's millions and millions of dollars just in the infrastructure alone.
Yeah.
So.
Do you have any idea when that would be done?
I think it's, I think it should be done. I think it's done.
Okay. Are they coming to present that?
I can have them cover that, yes.
Um, do you know?
The, um, what?
Can you go over a little bit of the TC3 course charges a little bit in there?
Yep, so, um, we have historically, um, paid for all students, um, classes, their college classes. Um, what's actually happening in transition is there's a, because the governor put this in part of her proposal that she'd like to see every student graduate potentially with 12 credits. There's now a co-sur. So, uh, the asynchronous courses that we used to pay through TC34, whether roughly probably about $750 a piece. Now those will run through a co-sur, so we'll be able to get aid back on, on those. This is just a transfer to cover, um, the difference in, in the bill for what, what students are currently taking. And it's pretty significant. And we keep going up and up and up in the number of credits. So we're, we're creeping to about 4,000, I think. Uh, but this co-sur is going to be extremely helpful moving forward that we'll be able to run a big chunk of, of funds through that receipt of aid back.
And that's effective.
That'll be effective next.
Yeah.
In this next, uh, budget cycle.
And some back charges and the entire dis- current year.
Yeah.
And projected summer costs.
We'll have students taking college courses this summer as well. Those are better real go-getters and they'll take, they'll take the asynchronous courses, they'll take, they'll take as many as they can.
Um, I just had a general question on the budget transfers, and I believe this was answered in the email, I couldn't find it. But is there a max, a max dollar amount of what can be transferred, um, back and forth? And then where, how's the money getting back to the, to the account that it came from? Or when does that, when does that happen?
So that, that would be where the, the fund balance sits. So every year when you see in the budget line of the, the 1.6 million of the fund balance, that would sit, it sits really primarily in the health line. Um, so if we need to make a transfer out, we'll, we can typically make it out of that line. Um, in terms of the amounts, these are, you know, you can approve whatever amount. I can't, I can't do a transfer unless it's under $10,000, right?
$10,000.
So.
Anything over $10,000, you'll see.
You'll see anything that's over $10,000 set.
There's no doubt, there's no max that what would be, um, proposed then?
No.
That was a more accurate.
Okay.
So we run these through like the CDO. So CDO will actually develop the, the transfer document based on what our needs are. Which is where that little staff who came with the, with the code.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. And that was the difference of, um, when we talked about the retirement sounds, that was the difference in addition that we need to put towards it. Which comes out of ultimately your, you know, your, your fund balance at the end of the year. Which is why we were talking earlier about the, the transition to the, the reserve pieces much more beneficial.
Anything else?
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Uh, seven miscellaneous items for action. CPSC, CSC, FAB4 recommendations, recommended that the recommendations of CPSC, CSC, FAB14 are hereby approved. The motion. So. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Seven miscellaneous items for action. CPSC, CSC, FAB4 recommendations, recommended that the recommendations of CPSC, CSC, FAB14 are hereby approved. The motion. So. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Uh, seven miscellaneous items for action. CPSC, CSC, FAB4 recommendations, recommended that the recommendations of CPSC, CSC, FAB14 are hereby approved. The motion. So. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Personals items for action. Need a motion to approve?
Uh, so, and then questions.
Yeah, then we have discussion.
Second.
He's ready with that screen.
Sure. I realized it wasn't. I turned it out.
I still moved it. Is there a second?
What would that say? Second. Can I second? So you're sure?
Yeah.
I second. I want to be a part of it. So discussion, uh, personnel items.
Uh, I just had a question on, let's see. Under teacher, new teacher appointments, um, vice is who they're replacing, right? Okay. So is there, hold on, I even printed this out. I never print out, and now I can't print. Um, under, let's see, oh, there's a long, there's a new long-term sub and a new, uh, technology teacher. And they both have, well, one says Kate Carpel and one just says Carpel.
Hmm.
Are they two separate Carpels or are they the same person and we have two different teachers?
Uh, that's true.
That looks weird.
Yeah.
Those ones being replaced by technology teacher and one by the long-term stuff.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we'll have to correct that.
Yeah. I think that was there.
So what should it say?
The, which one?
Well, either one. Um, so there's a long-term sub, um, or what did she, it's like art.
Or, uh, not lean.
Visual art, so art and the vice is just, that one is just Carpel.
Oh, I think that she was finishing the, the year, correct?
I don't know. Is that where you put it?
Yeah, because she's retroactive. She was finishing for Carpel for the remainder of the school year, but then, um, they're transitioning, they're, they're transitioning in the, in the art department at the high school.
Oh, okay. I see, all right, I see, I see.
So they need higher.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not the same.
Yeah.
Okay. I missed that retroactive, uh, piece of that.
Does anybody see the issue with the tenure appointments? Yeah. I hate being a voting member as long as I can sit down. I probably should. Just handle them. We don't have enough to approve. I think it's not impact one way or another.
No.
Influence to it.
You're just presenting it. I'm just presenting it to you as, and you're making it publicly known, so.
Okay.
I think it's.
Yeah. We'll head on that piece.
If we have five, then yeah, probably.
Okay.
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Yeah, what I really liked is the outline dollar background and it was good.
Good. Okay. Finance items for action. Six, uh, need a motion?
So.
Second?
I'll second.
And discussion?
You know, I thought that if I had this, we'd have nothing to get it out. And we know out of this study what we're actually, specifically what the outcome is with the, is it like a feasibility study, uh, facilities? How can we handle it?
I believe it's a feasibility study just specifically for, um, the power that it would be needed at the bus route if we were to transition to E.
Gosh.
Buses.
Yeah.
So it was in collaboration, I believe, with NISIC.
And what would it do with?
So they'll, they're, they're really, they're looking at the, the footprint of our current structure.
Right.
Power structures and trying to understand what it take. Could we off of our existing power?
Yeah.
Be able to, to handle? How many buses could we handle? You know, how much wattage would we need? Um, so that's, that's all included into that, that study.
They did a root study, didn't they?
Yeah, they did a, they did a bigger study. Not that we don't have power issues already because we seem to, it seems like we lose power like once a week, if not every couple of weeks. Um, so I think the, and then the, the other piece too is where the, the, the maintenance CTE building is that's, there's an additional power source there. So I think our understanding that is if they were to come with power, they would come that way versus, uh, the, towards the roadside. So there would be more significant power from, from that side of that. But yeah, we'll ha, I'll have them present that just so everybody can have an idea of what, what that entails. I'm sure that it's going to, uh, ultimately say that we don't have enough capacity for the infrastructure, um, to be able to handle that. And I think that, that is increasingly becoming a, a hot, a hotter topic at the, in Albany in terms of the amount of money that it's really going to cost for, for districts to try to be able to do this.
Yeah, just how piece of work it's.
Yeah. It's, it's millions and millions of dollars just in the infrastructure alone.
Yeah.
So.
Do you have any idea when that would be done?
I think it's, I think it should be done. I think it's done.
Okay. Are they coming to present that?
I can have them cover that, yes.
Um, do you know?
Is what?
The, um, what? Can you go over a little bit of the TC3 course charges a little bit in there?
Yep, so, um, we have historically, um, paid for all students, um, classes, their college classes. Um, what's actually happening in transition is there's a, because the governor put this in part of her proposal that she'd like to see every student graduate potentially with 12 credits. There's now a co-sur. So, uh, the asynchronous courses that we used to pay through TC34, whether roughly probably about $750 a piece. Now those will run through a co-sur, so we'll be able to get aid back on, on those. This is just a transfer to cover, um, the difference in, in the bill for what, what students are currently taking. And it's pretty significant. And we keep going up and up and up in the number of credits. So we're, we're creeping to about 4,000, I think. Uh, but this co-sur is going to be extremely helpful moving forward that we'll be able to run a big chunk of, of funds through that receipt of aid back.
And that's effective.
That'll be effective next.
Yeah.
In this next, uh, budget cycle.
And some back charges and the entire dis- current year.
Yeah.
And projected summer costs.
We'll have students taking college courses this summer as well. Those are better real go-getters and they'll take, they'll take the asynchronous courses, they'll take, they'll take as many as they can.
Um, I just had a general question on the budget transfers, and I believe this was answered in the email, I couldn't find it. But is there a max, a max dollar amount of what can be transferred, um, back and forth? And then where, how's the money getting back to the, to the account that it came from? Or when does that, when does that happen?
So that, that would be where the, the fund balance sits. So every year when you see in the budget line of the, the 1.6 million of the fund balance, that would sit, it sits really primarily in the health line. Um, so if we need to make a transfer out, we'll, we can typically make it out of that line. Um, in terms of the amounts, these are, you know, you can approve whatever amount. I can't, I can't do a transfer unless it's under $10,000, right?
$10,000.
So.
Anything over $10,000, you'll see.
You'll see anything that's over $10,000 set.
There's no doubt, there's no max that what would be, um, proposed then?
No.
That was a more accurate.
Okay.
So we run these through like the CDO. So CDO will actually develop the, the transfer document based on what our needs are. Which is where that little staff who came with the, with the code.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. And that was the difference of, um, when we talked about the retirement sounds, that was the difference in addition that we need to put towards it. Which comes out of ultimately your, you know, your, your fund balance at the end of the year. Which is why we were talking earlier about the, the transition to the, the reserve pieces much more beneficial.
Anything else?
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Uh, seven miscellaneous items for action. CPSC, CSC, FAB4 recommendations, recommended that the recommendations of CPSC, CSC, FAB14 are hereby approved. The motion. So. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Personals items for action. CPSC, CSC, FAB4 recommendations, recommended that the recommendations of CPSC, CSC, FAB14 are hereby approved. The motion. So. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Uh, seven miscellaneous items for action. CPSC, CSC, FAB4 recommendations, recommended that the recommendations of CPSC, CSC, FAB14 are hereby approved. The motion. So. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Personals items for action. CPSC, CSC, FAB4 recommendations, recommended that the recommendations of CPSC, CSC, FAB14 are hereby approved. The motion. So. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Personals items for action. CPSC, CSC, FAB4 recommendations, recommended that the recommendations of CPSC, CSC, FAB14 are hereby approved. The motion. So. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Personals items for action. CPSC, CSC, FAB4 recommendations, recommended that the recommendations of CPSC, CSC, FAB14 are hereby approved. The motion. So. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Uh, seven miscellaneous items for action. CPSC, CSC, FAB4 recommendations, recommended that the recommendations of CPSC, CSC, FAB14 are hereby approved. The motion. So. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Personals items for action. CPSC, CSC, FAB4 recommendations, recommended that the recommendations of CPSC, CSC, FAB14 are hereby approved. The motion. So. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Uh, seven miscellaneous items for action. CPSC, CSC, FAB4 recommendations, recommended that the recommendations of CPSC, CSC, FAB14 are hereby approved. The motion. So. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Personals items for action. CPSC, CSC, FAB4 recommendations, recommended that the recommendations of CPSC, CSC, FAB14 are hereby approved. The motion. So. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Personals report, this is kind of a report, more of a question inquiry, but, um, you know, at last meeting, I, maybe two weeks ago, I discussed with, speaking with some other, other presidents about how they do tenure. And that in terms of, uh, course recommendation, in terms of, I kind of got the sense, or actually I feel, and I got the sense from other people, like it would, it would come. It would come.
Teacher, new teacher appointments. Vice is who they're replacing, right? Okay, so is there? Hold on, I haven't printed this out. I never print out, and now I can't print it. Under, let's see, oh, there's a long, there's a new long-term sub. And a new technology teacher. And they both have, well, one says Kate Carpel and one just says Carpel. Are they two separate Carpels? Or are they the same person and we have two different teachers?
Uh, that's true.
There's ones being replaced by technology teachers and one by the long-term stuff. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to correct that.
Yeah.
So what should it say?
The, which one?
Well, either one. Um, so there's a long-term sub, um, or what did she, it's like art.
Or not lean.
Visual art, so art and the vice is just, that one is just Carpel.
Oh, I think that she was finishing the, the year, correct? Yeah, because she's retroactive. She was finishing for Carpel for the remainder of the school year. But then, um, they're transitioning, they're transitioning in the, in the art department at the high school.
Oh, okay. All right, I see, I see.
So they need higher.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I missed that retroactive, uh, piece of that.
Does anybody see the first issue with the tenure appointments? Hate being a voting member as long as that you sit down, or you probably should. Just handle them, you don't have enough to approve. It's not an impact one way or another.
No.
Influence to it.
You're just presenting it to me. I'm just presenting it to you as a, and you're making it publicly known, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll head on that piece.
If we have five, then yeah, probably, okay.
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Yeah, what I really liked was the outline dollar background and it was good.
Good. Okay. Finance items for action. Six, uh, need a motion?
Summon.
Seconds.
A second.
And discussion. You know, I probably, I had this written up, so we didn't get it out. Do we know out of this study? What we're actually specifically, where the outcome is with the, is it like a feasibility study, uh, facilities? How can we handle it?
I believe it's a feasibility study just specifically for, um, the power that it would be needed at the bus graph. If we were to transition to even.
Gosh.
Buses.
Just.
So it was in collaboration, I believe, with NICEC.
And what would it do with?
So they'll, they're, they're really, they're looking at the, the footprint of our current structure, power structures. And trying to understand what it take. Could we off of our existing power?
Yeah.
Be able to, to handle, how many buses could we handle? You know, how much wattage would we need? Um, so that's, that's all included into that, that study.
They did a root study, didn't they?
Yeah, they did a, they did a bigger study, not that we don't have power issues already. Because we seem to, it seems like we lose power like once a week, if not every couple of weeks. Um, so I think the, and then the, the other piece too is where the, the, the maintenance CTE building is, that's, there's an additional power source there. So I think our understanding that is if they were to come with power, they would come that way versus, uh, the, towards the roadside. So there would be more significant power from, from that side of that. But yeah, we'll ha, I'll have them present that, just so everybody can have an idea of what, what that entails. I'm sure that it's gonna ultimately say that we don't have enough capacity for the infrastructure, um, to be able to handle that. And I think that, that is increasingly becoming a, a hot, a hotter topic at the, in Albany. In terms of the amount of money that it's really gonna cost for, for districts to try to be able to do this.
Yeah, just how piece of work it's.
Yeah, it's, it's millions and millions of dollars just in the infrastructure alone.
Yeah.
So.
Do you have any idea when that will be done?
I think it's, I think it should be, I think it's done. Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's done.
Are they coming to present that?
I can have them cover that, yes.
Um, you know? The, um, look, can you go on with a little bit of the TC three course charges or what can be there?
Yep, so, um, we have historically, um, paid for all students, um, classes, their college classes. Um, what's actually happening in transition is there's a, because the governor put this in part of her proposal that she'd like to see every student graduate potentially with twelve credits. There's now a co-sur. So, uh, the asynchronous courses that we used to pay through TC three fours, whether roughly probably about seven hundred and fifty dollars a piece. Now those will run through a co-sur, so we'll be able to get aid back on, on those. This is just a transfer to cover, um, the difference in, in the bill for what, what students are currently taking. And it's pretty significant and we keep going up and up and up in the number of credits. So we're, we're creeping to about four thousand, I think. Uh, but this co-sur is gonna be extremely helpful moving forward. That will be able to run a big chunk of, of funds through that receipt of aid back.
And that's effective.
That'll be effective next, in this next budget cycle.
And some back charges and the entire district's current year and projected summer costs.
A lot of students, I think, college courses this summer as well. Those are better real go-getters and they'll take, they'll take the asynchronous courses, they'll take, they'll take as many as they can.
Um, I've got a general question on the budget transfers and I believe this was answered in the email, I couldn't find it. But is there a max, a max dollar amount of what can be transferred, um, back and forth? And then where, how's the money getting back to the, to the account that it came from? Or when does that, when does that happen?
So that, that would be where the, the fund balance sits. So every year when you see in the budget line of the, the one point six million of the fund balance, that would sit, it sits really primarily in the health line. Um, so if we need to make a transfer out, we'll, we can typically make it out of that line. In terms of the amounts, these are, you know, you can approve whatever amount. I can't, I can't do a transfer unless it's under ten dollars, right? So.
Anything over ten thousand, you'll see.
You'll see anything that's over ten thousand dollars that.
There's no doubt, there's no max that what would be, um, proposed then?
No.
That was a more accurate.
So we run these through like the CDO, so CDO will actually develop the, the transfer document based on what our needs are. Which is where that little staff who came with the, with the code.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. And that was the difference of, um, when we talked about the retirement sounds, that was the difference in addition that we need to put towards it. Which comes out of ultimately your, you know, your, your fund balance at the end of the year. Which is why we were talking earlier about the, the transition to the, the reserve pieces much more beneficial.
Anything else?
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe? Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Uh, seven miscellaneous items for action. CPSC, CSC, five of four recommendations, recommended that the recommendations of CPSC, CSC, five of fourteen are hereby approved. The motion. Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Uh, President's Report, this is kind of a report, more of a question inquiry. Um, you know, at last meeting, I, maybe two weeks ago, I discussed with, speaking with some other board presidents about how they do tenure, not in terms of, uh, course recommendation, but in terms of, I kind of got the sense, or actually I feel, and I got the sense from other people, like it'd be comfortable, it would be an improvement for me personally to know what I'm voting on. Or know who I'm voting on. And that, part of that's my responsibility. And so one board president had mentioned that when they have tenure appointments that come up, they know who's coming up. When they do their building tours, they kind of have the person who's up for tenure at the end of the building tour. So it can be like a Q and A, a meet, a meet greet, uh, in the building, in their classroom. Just to know who I'm, who I'm looking at, you know, so.
Well, we just, I mean, to help, it was on June, or June second, and we planned to have them all come for a reception.
Okay.
But as I said before, if there's something the, the board would like to see differently, we certainly could put a committee together. And if there's maybe some different pieces of things that you'd like to see going into that, we certainly can make adjustments or changes.
I would, I would just want to see before their, you know, approval and put our vote in the vote that I have met just kind of since.
Yep.
This is at the end of June, we're very old at that.
Yeah, we're very, yeah. But if you'd like to put something moving forward, is there anything?
Oh.
Put a small committee together or something, if, if we're interested.
What's your thoughts on?
I like that, you know, sorry, I mean, just, I hear the names, I see the names, right? As far as like, you know, not having kids in the, the element or some of that sort of things. Like, you know, no, if you, if you don't have any reason to be in that moment.
Sure.
Which was, which is coming through.
Yeah. And that, you know, it's really as much of a. I just feel uncomfortable voting without having, you know, just kind of me and a person who didn't vote yet.
So you've never met.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, you know.
Yeah.
So you want to, would you have a note down about maybe getting some group together to, to get some ideas?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and what can you request on what we do? We should pretend I was.
All right, so we have our friend here with us today, Mr. Bernard Fleming, who, uh, is part of the Fox Grant Program for Binghamton University. Uh, he along with, um, some of his colleagues have been, uh, at OES for two years now, right?
Yeah.
For two years and, uh, supporting, uh, mental health needs of our students. And it's been really a pretty, pretty neat program. He's probably gonna touch on the, there's a little influx right now in terms of, uh, the federal government and potential cuts to, to some of the, the grant funds. I wouldn't bank on it a hundred percent at this point. Um, but hopefully that, I think right now would impact the, the work that they do, which has been incredible work, especially for our district. You've seen some of the charts and the number of kids that, um, they've been able to, to work with. So I'm gonna turn it over to you and, um, just wanted to preface it with that. But I don't think it's a done deal. I think that there's, there'll be a lot of advocacy happening, um, in, in that area, which there should be for sure.
How much we said just, I don't know what, you know, I have a question. You know, I think I can mark it and we'll stand.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bernard Fleming, again, at Southern Binghamton University, specifically Binghamton University Community Schools. Um, Carol says hello. She told me to say hi to you. So we are with the, uh, and you can go to the next one.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, no, before I start that, I want to thank the Oego School District and specifically OES for welcoming us. Um, we never felt like, oh, that's BU over there with them over in the corner. Stacy and Harry make us feel like honorary Riverhawks since we have been here. So, thank you. And I want to say that probably didn't ensure, they get that acknowledgement to the fact that the staff have been tremendous to us. So this is just a brief summary, as you know, it's a grant from the United States Department of Education. It's a five-year grant and a little chuckle at that. Um, and as, as everyone heard, it's in flux. Um, the official word as of, you know, now is that this grant won't be renewed as of twelve thirty-one. But there's a lot of advocacy going on that, that's way above my head. Um, and the university has put in an appeal. So not to say it's open, it's just the official word for everyone now, it's twelve thirty-one. So we are through the, uh, university, we follow the university assisted community school model. So meaning, we have this wonderful university in our community and we say, we have all these resources. What can we bring to the community that we're in to help you all out? And voila, this grant. And that's what we're here doing. Next time. I feel, so where's the, so these are the goals of the grant. So now we are in six different, well, other than Oego, we're in five different districts. And this grant is specifically for rural areas, rural schools. Because the studies have shown this is where the mental health, I mean, I'll skip pictures of the wire. Mental health is needed all over, no matter what districts you're in, but they find in rural districts, it's needed even more so. So that's what we're here for. And it's hoping to increase the number of social workers that want to work in rural districts. So we have these wonderful, wonderful students who said, you know what? Sure, I want to work in a rural school district. I, a lot of them don't know anything about a rural district. Um, none of the interns that I've worked with have ever worked in a rural district. But this was an eye-opener for them. I personally had never, I've driven through Oego. I didn't know a lot about Oego. I, you know, I could read statistics and whatever, but statistics are one thing, but when you're in it and you're here and you see the kids and you see the families, you know, makes all the difference. So that are, that's some of the goals of the grant. So these are some of our project activities. And I know everyone can read, I'm not gonna read that verbatim, because that's boring. We've been here for, I don't know how long already. But we want to make sure that the students in OES, not OES, excuse me, Oego School District, but right now we're in OES. We can get them the services that they need. The services, when we get to see the students that aren't ready for the social worker and aren't ready for the school psychologists, those students who would kind of be lost in the cracks. And those are the students that we can see, those are the students that interns can do check-ins with. Those are the ones we can grab for group work. Those are the ones, you know, who, we have a wonderful, we had a wonderful, we're on the end of the semester, a wonderful group going for students who are suffering the loss of a loved one, a grief group. So now loss of a loved one means a lot of things. It can be separation of parents, which we found a lot this semester, the actual loss of a loved one. And our interns have, they took their grief training, grief and loss training, and they took those skills in creating a group and create a community with those students. And some of those students thought they were the only one in the school who had lost someone. But then they got amongst their peers and they realized, I'm not by myself. So those, that's some of the impacts that we're making, some of the activities. The team, I am so excited, I see my voice just went up. I'm so excited about, um, these interns that, uh, we work with this semester, though. All right, there they go. We have John, Lily, Faith, and Chris. Uh, John and Chris are bachelor level, they are graduating next week. So that's super exciting. And Lily and Faith are MSW one, so they're in their first year of their MSW program. And fun fact about Chris, because he was in a four plus one program, next year he's going into the MSW program, only one year to complete. So that's, that's a wonderful team. Now, you are a school board and you deal in faction figures, so that's what everybody wants to know. Here are our faction figures. So we work with the tier intervention system. Well, because our goal is, when I met with Stacy the first time, I said, you tell me what you think we're supposed to do and let's see if we're on the same page. And she started talking tier one, tier two theory, so she's thinking my language. I knew what you're talking about and I said, let's figure out how we can work this out. So these figures, every day, the students after they're done, they fill out a log of what type of work they've done. So these figures are cumulative, um, this is, some of those are March thirtieth, April hasn't been done yet. So this shows you the percentage of where our work is at in the school. So tier one and tier three, that's what we're, that's what we're rocking and rolling. That is what we're seeing. So the one, the one-on-one therapeutic or skill reading is important. Those are like the grief and loss group, those are, we have group, we have kindness groups going on. We have students are seen one-on-one. And just to give you a brief how the students are referred to us, we stay on the SST Committee. So the school psychologist, social worker, admin, the nurse, and the SRO. And they talk about the students that are need, that need services, so, okay, who are the students that obviously that we can work with that don't need the social worker or the school psychologist? And we take those, we get to see those students. Um, students who probably wouldn't have been seen by anyone because of just, you know, time and resources, right? And we're here and we are, here's the word that every board loves, we're free, you know? So, the only thing it costs, it costs you as a district, can we have a space? And that is it. And OES has given us wonderful, well, we, we fit in, we can fit in. But we make it work, we all make it work. So that, these are our numbers. Student impact, this is the one I really love. So as you see here, total number of student interactions, so from August to March thirtieth, our interns have interacted with your students over two thousand times. Our interns have been in five hundred and eighty-five hours here. Four hundred total number of group and one-on-one interaction with students. And we're seeing, uh, this number is a little higher now, but we're seeing over seventy students. So this is potentially seventy students who probably would have never, ever seen someone in the school setting. Again, because of time and resources, but we have the time and we are the resource and we're there to help and serve OES. I keep saying OES, Oego. Oego. So I like this slide, and I took your mission, so I would take your mission, I said, what's the mission of the Oego Appalachian School District? I said, okay, so now what are we doing to support that mission? And these are some of the activities we're doing. So we're supporting the, the store carts, the trades that are being done at OES, family cafes and focus groups. We, we have, we conducted focus groups, uh, I, we conducted nine focus groups this year. So three student groups, three parent groups, three staff groups. These results will be coming to you, to the evaluators, um, they're working on all that stuff, that's above me. I don't, I'll do the focus groups, give you all you need to know, and they make all that magic happen in the background. Uh, we're finishing up, we're, we finished up a non-personal food and hygiene drive, the, uh, the interns have done. So now those families are being identified, we're getting that stuff to them. And again, our tier levels of support. So what I did, what I really thought about when I came in the beginning of the year, I listened to Dr. Green and I said, okay. I see where he wants the district to go. What can we do to help in where the district wants to go as, you know, bucks? And these are some of the things that we are doing at the school. I'm super excited. Our interns have been getting training all year, so these are just some of their trainings at the beginning. So, you know, the social therapy, which may mean nothing to anybody, but grief and loss, student engagement, which is very important. Student engagement. One of the first things I tell all the interns when they come into the school, I said, this is what you're going to do. All of us, and myself included, we are going to work in the cafeteria. And they didn't get it at first, like, you know, I'm supposed to be seeing students. We're gonna work in the cafeteria. And as the time went on, they realized, making those connections with those students, sit down, have lunch with them, talk about the lunch, talk about the student. One of the interns said, I don't know what to talk about students with. Taylor Swift, we can start right there, trust me, you will open up a book. You know, it's just something very simple as that. So student engagement is huge for me and for us. And when they started seeing students one-on-one or in groups, those students had a connection, they're like, oh, I remember you from the cafeteria. I know you from here, I've seen you in the hall. Yes, we're gonna walk the halls, we're gonna be known. This is how you get engaged students. Yes. I love this part. So every day I told the students to fill out a, uh, a daily log, our interns. And there's different, a lot of different categories. So did, do you feel like your work made a difference? And these are quotes from some of the interns about how they feel about their work, what it made a difference. And the third one, which I love, a story shared by student staff or family member to you. Which again, engagement, student engagement, family engagement, parent engagement. How, are we making a difference? Are we just, or are we just here? Right, if we're just here, we could pack up our bags. We need to be making a difference in this building every day. And I think, matter of fact, I know we have. Uh, Stacy has, um, said to me, we don't know what the future holds, right? We don't know. But she said she would love to have more of our social work interns coming to OES. And, and I know bucks will make that happen, they will make it happen. I'm sorry, a little emotional because I just, the work that was done, this shit is incredible. All right, I shouldn't, this is so unprofessional of me, sorry about that, that one. Um, so we, again, we follow the university assisted community school models and these are our researchers here at Majora Kathleen and Tony May. School Mental Health Project, that's my director, so she's a school advisor. And then there's myself. They can always contact us if you want to know anymore about the program. We are happy to talk to you about it. We are happy, uh, the research portion of it, they are happy to collaborate, see if they can collaborate more with the district. And if you, the district is interested in coming to community school, those are the people to talk to, to guide you and get you on the way. So I think that's just, thank you for your continued partnership and support. Um, but again, thank you. I feel I'm an honorary Riverhawk, although I live in Binghamton. And I can't, I can't let the Patriot ride dog, but it's okay, we're in two different counties. So there's no competition, different counties. I, I wore Binghamton Patriot shirt to work one day, I'm like, we're in two different counties, there's no competition. I, I feel good about this. Um, do you have any questions for me?
The work and stuff that they're doing, you said about the research, so like the work they're doing here, they're collecting data and stuff like that.
Yes, because this is actually a research grant.
Okay.
So yeah, so we are collecting, oh, lots of data. Lots and lots, and they're, they're working on those reports and those reports are going to be, uh, uh, prepared to you. Um, oh, hopefully, I know over the summer.
Yeah, we've been fortunate with Binghamton, um, in several different areas, they'll go do some research with them. This is just another example of, they've been, they've been really great to look at.
Is somebody, somebody? Yeah, so, um, so your background, is it social work or counseling or?
All of that. Um, more specifically student affairs, so.
Okay.
My guess.
What do you, which I've always, I'm a former council, school council. So I always, uh, I'm very interested in like the, the future of, um, counseling, social work, and school psychologists in the school. And where, it seems like they're pushing to have social workers fill that gap between, like you had mentioned before, you know, it's not a, it's not a social work level, it's not a school psychologist level.
Right, right.
But the counselors are doing a lot of other stuff, um, that are required by the needs of the school district. So what are your thoughts on the future of mental health in terms of positions?
I think the more than area, uh, the students, we're seeing students, for whatever reason, you know, I, I, they just need more. They need more. And, and in a perfect world, we, you know, we could waive them on, have all the unlimited funds and hire all the staff. We could, I'm sure everybody in this room would, for the, you know, benefit of each student, students in this district. I, I think the more that, we, we need students to be caught at every level. Because the work that the school psychologist is phenomenal. But she's also not doing the work that a, a school counselor could, could do. She's more clinical. So I think everyone coming together and feeding the whole child is what's gonna work. Instead of just one piece of the child.
Yeah, there's certainly many books to say, you're sitting in cafeteria and walk the hallway, but that makes such a huge.
It, it, it does, and as you, and I told you, that's one of the first things I have big interns do, this is what we're gonna do. Those connections are crucial. When a child feels safe, it's not like when a child feels safe to you when they're upset and they want to run to you because you are their safe person. That means that's, that's, that speaks volumes, like, you can't even write about it, it just speaks volumes, just that connection.
What I kind of hear you saying is like, when I taught and there were kids that you knew had a lot of needs and they're, they're hurting, but they didn't qualify for all these services, they didn't have a counselor, they didn't get to go to the dentist, no, they didn't get to sort of. So you're the people that can kind of scoop them up.
Right, and we also do, um, I've been one of the sites, academic intervention. So there was a student, he was going through, there's a lot going on at home, he wasn't focusing in class.
Right.
So, and there were certain periods, well, certain not periods, so certain times of day, you know, he's going, he wasn't focusing. So I would go, I worked out with the teacher, I said, okay, when is he most unfocused? She told me, I would go with him, I would know he's just sitting there. And we'd get his work done. Because you know he was unfocused, okay, hey. And one of the one techniques I use, I'm like, you know what, can you be my teacher? Can you show me how to do this? And he's first grade, so he ate that up, right? And he did his work, he got, he got it done. So, but the work, the work can be done, the work can be done. So, but the work, the work can be done. The work can be done. I do apologize if I got that. It's a little emotional. I just, I just love what, what we've done here and the partnership we've formed with the school. And I would, I would hate to see it go away for whatever reason.
Thank you. We appreciate all that you guys do for, for our kids. And I know that, you know, my conversations with Stacy, that she's, she's thrilled with the work that you guys are doing.
But, but I will say, although I love what I do, unfortunately, I will not be there next semester. Yeah, I, I, I've accepted a new position within the university. So, so whoever it is is in, you know, I'm gonna be watching it. I feel like this is my baby, because we all came in here, grown up and new. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Alright. I'm upset that at one moment I can't get Marvel's Peaches. Um, my favorite spot to watch.
District business, new. Marathon Health Contract. In motion?
So we already voted on it?
Well, we voted.
Yeah.
Well.
This is just a, they've heard of the contract itself, yeah.
Well, you just, so, the motions that we can discuss. The second, the discussion? Yes, so that's, um, we did vote on it. We voted on to negotiate. To get together and come up with what the, uh, contract would look like. So this is what the contract look like, looks like. So we did vote on it to approve, to talk that we were gonna sit down and gauge in deliberations on what the contract would look like. This is what, this come up. So, but I, I think it's fair to have conversations. From what I understand, this is it, right?
This is it. Yep. This is the, so this is the same exact contract that Maidenhead has. It is with the physician's assistant. So I think that the, the decision was to start out there and then see how everything goes and, and go from there. Do you know that there's already been some other interests? Which is, which plays, uh, to our, our benefit moving forward if there, there is some additions there. So that, that is good. They did come back and, um, they gave us a ten thousand dollar marketing credit. And then also took the risk, uh, from five percent to ten percent. So they made some, they did some, some goodwill in terms of making some adjustments there in terms of the, the contract itself, so. They're ready to move forward and, uh, and start the planning process. We have a tentative meeting scheduled, I think, for May twenty-seventh. We're gonna really talk about like the kickoff and what the next six months will really look like. Because ultimately, we won't, the facility won't really be up and running and ready to go until about December. So there'll be a lot of upfront work, uh, that they talked about before that, that they'll do.
Would that come in as just invoices to us as far as the, for, for work done, or is it, uh, how's that work?
Oh, in terms of the, the construction work in there, I think that they've included it all into the, the pricing. One of the things about this, uh, space is it's pretty well set up. It really doesn't need a whole lot, maybe some paint and a little bit of equipment, uh, in, in some of the exam rooms. But it's, it was a pre-existing medical office, so it's, it's pretty well set to go. There's not, not gonna be any construction, I don't think, really taking place as far as maybe some new flooring here and there. Paint, it's a lot of basic stuff that we can do. So that cost, I think, is gonna be much lower than what initially was at this point.
I think that was all included when we started.
It is, yeah, yep.
And then, um, like, this is kind of stupid. Did I, did we ever get the coaster? I remember you talked about that.
So we, there is a coaster. We just don't have all the specifics on the coaster. We believe that it's gonna cover, um, any of the administrative costs. Possibly the, the administrative person who does all of that work, their salary may be, uh, included in there. The lease, uh, the cost of the lease maybe, and then we're working on the other pieces. So that's part of our meeting on the twenty-seventh. Um, is, is waiting, uh, to talk to the state a little further and seeing about what more they might be able to do.
That would be great.
Yeah.
And then I see it's every five years, we, we, or else we, it just keeps going.
Yep.
And they have a hundred and eighty days prior expiration. So we're gonna get like four, four months.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get, yep.
And who, who will, um, like, will they be, will Marathon be stopping in or, how often will they be visiting the site and everything? Because like their offices aren't around here.
Um, in terms of the, so they're, they're gonna hire, so they'll be their employees, so they'll have someone that's gonna be in charge of managing the facility. And then in terms of how frequently, I can ask that question on the twenty-seventh, how frequently they would come and report to the board? Probably as much as we would want them to. I would imagine it would be, you know, if it's quarterly or a couple of times a year, whatever that looks like, I'm sure that they.
Yeah, because I mean, I think it's important to just kind of see how things are going all along.
Yep, yep. And I think we'll get all that, that data will be all included in the.
Yeah, because I know that's two things we looked at, was just how many people are gonna be engaged in it and then what their satisfaction rate was.
Yep.
But I mean, there's other things to look at, kind of, but we wanna make sure we keep our.
Yep.
Know what's going on.
I agree.
And our attorneys, this is, our attorney, I'm sure, looked at the contract and everything and said everything's good.
Yeah, so their, our attorney actually worked with Maidenhead's attorney and they both agreed to everything that's in there. Yep.
Did we, uh, we had talked at some point about engaging, uh, uh, four years?
Yeah, so that would be part of the, the kickoff piece is that, all the marketing and, um, branding that will go on in terms of.
They had it in the budget and things, part of.
Yep, yep. It's all built in as part of the, the rollout of that. So that will become the education piece. We'll start with the staff as well. There'll be a good six, seven months of, uh, probably continuous engagement there. Which is good, gives people time to think about it. And we'll do some different things, I think, we, we've talked about doing, maybe, you know, a field trip up to, once the facility's updated and take people through it. Once they're hired, they're, they get an opportunity maybe to do like an open house type thing to meet, meet the folks that are gonna be employed there and then just to see the facility to help people become familiar a bit. So we'll do some different things like that.
So, um, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. Um, you said you're meeting on the twenty-seventh? You're tentative, saying on the thirteenth, right? Possibly here. We may have to be here.
Oh, that's for, that's, that's separate, that's just negotiations.
Right, that's one of the things, I think, is this something that do we, do we want more board members on the boat, or are we comfortable voting? I, I'm okay, but it seems like a pretty big.
Yeah, I think they're, they're looking to get going. I know that because Maidenhead will approve, so they wanna, they wanna try to get things rolling, which is, I said, well, our next meeting was coming.
I mean.
I believe everybody that gave feedback that was here before, was only one person maybe was the, for it, but.
Um, yeah, I mean, so what we've all got on before is essentially the same as this.
It is, yeah.
Nothing.
It's just the adjustments that were to the good for us in terms of a couple of the minor changes in, in the contract, but everything else is staying, yeah. It's absolutely the same. I think they've seen the contract, they've seen the contract.
Yeah, they'll come.
Jessica?
Actually, we still moved, right? Yeah, okay, hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Yes.
John?
Hi.
Thank you.
Other comments? Uh, I guess you're gonna say that part of them? I have a follow-up. There's a discussion.
I was just gonna say May thirteen.
Oh.
I did think, yeah, possibly May thirteen, in the budget hearing, so.
Oh, correct. So we needed just that, so.
Yes.
Was there any, so the script was, the budget was the? So we'll do the, um, that would be the second day of intense negotiation. So if we need to have a meeting, but works with, uh, doing the budget hearing, we'll do it at six. And then if we need to have a meeting, it could be at six fifteen.
Oh, again, same day.
Be right, yeah, same time, same thing.
Yeah, so we're definitely having something like that.
Definitely having the budget.
We're having the budget hearing for sure. Whether we have an official meeting or not, that'll be up in the air.
And that's just, uh, is it?
Oh, the, yeah, the budget hearing, yeah. No, that's just a presentation.
Okay. So, we're gonna briefly discuss, is there a person reach out?
I can talk to, yeah, so we've had an individual in the community that, that reached out to Ryan and, and had, um, expressed interest in starting a skeet and, and trap team. And learning more about kind of what the difference of the two actually is. So I had a, the, I hosted the superintendent from Tyoka County here last Thursday. And it came up as a topic of, of discussion. I know that, uh, Waverly currently has a team. He had discussed that they're, you know, certainly would be open to having conversations about joining the kids together in some way, you know, till things, I guess, get to a certain place. We talked even about, potentially about the students from Kander, students from Tyoka, and we go like, like almost a county-based team as well. So I think it's, there's some interest there. But I think that there's some, some key pieces that, that go into it in terms of the cost of ammo and how do you buy the ammo and different things like, like that that'll, that'll go into it.
There were, well, there are a few things that I guess the individual had said that they may get clear. Because I know some people probably will, you know, have a, a platik about discussing, uh, guns and shooting. Which is understandable, I guess, but, uh, the guns, you wanna make it clear that the guns and the ammo would stay at the site, which would be.
There's a gun, that actually, Waverly does that at a local gun club, is where they host theirs.
And then the Ugo, or Ugo's got a gun club, type of gun, uh, would be there. Nothing would ever be on campus. So, the discussion really was, uh, if it takes the next step, whether it be official, which is I think a push from some districts, maybe official sport, or start it as a club and see what kind of interest there is.
So what I did find out was that, so the skeet team, where they're, they're, one is this way and then the other is straightforward in terms of the clay, pigeons or things that shoot. But there's a smaller number of teams that live in the state that, um, compete for skeet. But there's a pretty significant number for trap. And understanding the two has something to do with whatever their shooting angle is this way or this way. I don't understand it a hundred, a hundred percent for sure, even after our conversations the other day, but, I do know that we talked a little bit about like what it entails and, um, like Donald said, said that, you know, they practice usually a couple of days a week. They'll go up to the, to the gun club and, and do their, their target shooting and practicing. And then they just have some competitions here and there.
You said Waverly has one.
Waverly has a team.
Has to do with the, I guess that's what I wondered what the, what the school would cover, what the district would cover, even if it was a team, right? Because it's a matter of thing of equipment, like, the, it'd be the personal effort, they'd borrow something at the school.
So they, it sounds to me like they purchase, um, like ammunition and things, everything through the club. So they, uh, it's almost like they pay the club a fee versus us going out and saying, well, we need four hundred rounds of ammo that we have to buy from Amazon or something. They ha, they handle all of that stuff, so I think that, that's a helpful, uh, component, but. The, I think the real question is, uh, you know, we probably have to gauge some interest first to see maybe the, the number of kids that might be interested. I wouldn't be surprised if we got a decent amount of kids that were, were interested. The other piece, I guess, is what other districts wanna participate? How many students could Waverly handle if we did something in collaboration with them?
What are, what are the, I don't know much about this sport, um, at all.
Yes.
Is, is there like a, how many kids typically on a team or compete?
I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a limit in terms of number of kids that can, can compete on a team.
Can you like track those in the E one, E two?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. Just maybe. I mean, it doesn't sound to me like Waverly has a large number of kids that are. Five or six, I think.
Are there many teams around to compete with, or are we just gonna play just play a team?
Yeah, there's, the gentleman had said that, uh, Kander and Tyoka had an interest. And I worked at Kander and there's a rifle range in the basement at Kander. I thought that was kind of interesting.
Cephalitis one, too.
Yeah, go do that. So, you know, going back, how far? Yeah.
Yeah, they used to have one.
They used to have a rifle, so. So I, 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 I think it's interesting, you know, even at that, but, um, you know, I think it's, and I think about a lot in the pool, you know, we never had a pool here. And as soon as you give an opportunity for a kid to be successful, and, you know, think about the Kachil girl, you think about a number of scholars in the past, or, or kind of scholarships that have kind of caught on. I think it's worth considering. I do have a cousin who has a son who's in Texas, who's in, it's a national skeet shooting, trap shooting. So I've seen the benefits, kind of, at a distance, but, um, but it is a sensitive topic, obviously. It's a, it's a very sensitive topic. It needs to be, I think, balanced, both sides, um, and, and discussed, so that was worth the conversation.
So I, you, do you like, I can continue conversations with Waverly and, um, Kander? Or, I, you know, I don't know which way you want me to, to continue to look into.
Do something, right, essentially.
Well, it's, it's.
Quite pigeons, and they.
Yeah.
Don't use quite pigeons.
Yeah, so they're not, yeah, they're shooting like, like pigeons. It's accuracy target type.
Neck and.
Scoring the package.
Oh, no.
Neck and.
Oh, no.
No.
Pretty, uh, play.
Or, or to claim, they get a lot of chances.
Yeah, it shoots out of those, I think.
Is this, is this, this is, um,
it does not say, and I can't tell where the, and Waverly has seventeen in the edition.
Seventeen kids at the, wow.
This might be, that's trap. Cause he was straight. He didn't shoot up. Skeet is up, right? Definitely skeet up and trap is shoot straight, yeah. So.
So I mean, I guess we can keep it, we wanna keep it out as a discussion item to, to talk a little bit.
Facebook page.
I'm gonna get more discussion. Been willing and to look at all, you know, a lot of other sports and clubs and I guess worth the conversation, or hearing the opinions of other people.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not voting for anything right now, but just, you know, to talk about it.
I don't just want to buy no, I don't think, paying that budget for myself, I know the ammunition's price expensive, yeah, and nothing's reusable.
I think if you're the coach, you get free ammo. Is it?
But that'd be the only thing. It's funny point is that my father was actually the rifle coach at Kander for some time.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I could, I mean, you know, I just, I remember seeing it.
Well, before I came along.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So a different time, but yeah, it's, uh, so maybe if you get a full compliment of the board at the next meeting, that, that, you know, maybe I'll send a email out to the board and just say, this is a topic of discussion. And I'm sure that if we, if we did it and we partnered, I don't think, what's it called now?
Stack and Sporting, I think.
I, I can think of one. I would think that they would want us to be there as opposed to.
Buster movie, Lasher.
How would you gauge for, or at what point would you gauge for interest? I mean, how far along do we discuss until they're like, oh, no one's, you know, I mean?
Yeah, you know, I, I was saying to Joe, I, I quoted a little bit to the girls wrestling edition. We thought, well, maybe a one or two, and then we ended up with, I think, seven or eight. Once it comes to a, you know, fruition, that it's gonna happen and all of a sudden, I think you get a little bit, bit more interest, but. I don't know how we technically go about that. I think we may have some individuals who are, but no a good amount of kids that might be interested in this kind of thing, so, uh, we could probably just, you know, gauge through conversation.
I'm pretty sure to see what the requirements are for, like, I'll say the coach or something like that.
Yeah.
How much does the sports, so, sportsmen, uh, participate in it?
Yeah, I don't know any of that. I'd have to talk to Eric to find out.
There'd be an element of gun safety and all sorts of things that would have to go into it.
Yeah.
Requirements?
Requirements, yeah.
Yeah. I think so. But I wouldn't shock you if we had eight, 10 kids. You know, within a year time, that we're, I wouldn't shock you of it. Would shock you? No, it's probably double that number, but especially if I think they can do it, and it's a couple of days a week, so they don't, you know, it's not like you're, you know, you're practicing six days a week or anything like that, it's just a couple of days.
Yeah, we'll just have to find out more about it.
Yeah.
You can see this one coming.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
But, yeah.
I think we need to look into it, if they find some more information out.
She, she was in competition, she did really well. School and state, or trap, all of a sudden, oh.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, she, she really thought. I mean, I don't know, there's a lot of considerations, but I think we need to find out more.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Waverly would be a good resource of what is required for each student, you know, and then coach.
Yep.
Wait, you said coach.
Because he said coach.
Okay. Okay, um.
Any questions?
One favor?